Welcome to this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. I'd like to call us to order and I'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Circe.
Here.
I think about it for a second. Welcome, everyone, to our meeting this evening. Tonight, we have some special guests with us that we want to introduce. This is a Montgomery College Scholarship recipients are with us this evening. We started this a number of years ago, thanks to councilmember Smith, who suggested to the rest of us that we provide scholarships to some of the Montgomery College students. And I don't know Brad Stewart at Montgomery College, if I want to, do I want to turn it over to you so you can introduce who you have with you from the college?
Well, actually, I'll say, first of all, thank you to all the members of the council for what you do for our students. We brought some of our best and brightest tonight. And Rose Garvin-Acolino from the college's Community Engagement and Advancement Office will introduce the students.
Wonderful. Great. I'll turn it over to you, Rose, then.
Please forgive me. I am looking for that list right now. I made a last-minute change in plans. I'm actually in Connecticut right now. So if you can bear with me just a minute. I am would like Brandy and Monica to also introduce themselves. They're from the college staff. And if they do that, I will find the list. I know we have our students. I can see them.
And we can also, after Brandy and Monica speak, we could also just go around robin and have our students introduce themselves. So Brandy and Monica, do you want to say some words?
Yeah, sure. I'll go first. Good evening. My name is Monica Burgos, and I am the proud Aces coach at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. I was previously the high school coach, most recently at Montgomery Blair High School. So I have the pleasure of knowing quite a few of the students on this call today. Thank you.
And hello, I'm Brandy Norton, and I'm the director for the Office of Grants and Sponsored Programs at Montgomery College. And I just wanted to thank you all for the scholarships and thank the students for taking the time to be here and to speak with us.
Terrific. Thank you. And I think I see, is it Georgie is one of the students? Great. Georgie, do you want to kick us off and introduce yourself and tell us what you're majoring in?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Georgiana Vari. And this, I am a, well, I'm pursuing a nursing degree, so my major is nursing. And this is my second time receiving the Tacoma Park Scholarship. So I am so grateful for everyone who participated in allowing me the chance to receive that. So yeah. And I'm actually graduating Montgomery College in the in May, actually. So thank you so much.
Do you, do you know where, which hospital you're going to go to work for yet?
Oh, no, I'm just not, I haven't really gone that far yet, but.
I know, I know they're looking for you very strongly. Talked to folks from Adventist and MedStar and Holy Cross all in the last couple of weeks, and they keep asking me about how many graduates are coming.
Good. Wonderful. And I can't see the names on the screen, but I see one other student. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Nathaniel Getitrou. My major is, and now I'm in STEM, but I'm thinking to do architects or some kind of engineering. And yeah, I was, I've lived in Tacoma Park for quite, like, since I entered the United States. I went to Tacoma Park Middle School and Montgomery Blair High School. So yeah, and I'm really thank you for the scholarship because it did really help me. I don't really receive a lot of financial aids. And I kind of kickoff with, you know, cover some of my financials. And I really appreciate it for the scholarship.
Great. Thank you for joining us this evening.
And I do see two other students with us. Wilder?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Wilder, and this is my first time receiving this scholarship, and it's my first year attending Montgomery College. I'm actually pursuing a degree in construction management. It's been something I've been interested in. Just working as a team of people, and it's very diverse, and I really like the classes I've been taking so far. And I've been living in Tacoma Park my entire life. I've gone through the entire school system here. I've known Ms. Burgos for quite a while, and she's been a very big help in my life, and especially towards my college experience. Yeah, for the, when I heard I received this, you know, this scholarship, it was definitely helpful, you know, kind of eased my mind to know that, you know, instead of worrying about financial needs, I can focus on, you know, school, focus on my studies, making sure I'm passing these classes. And it was just, you know, a big breather for me to like, you know, not have to worry so much about money. And I was just extremely grateful for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have Julissa.
Hello. Hi. Good evening. My name is Julissa. My major is business. This is my second time receiving this scholarship, and it's really helpful, not for me only, but for other students. And I really appreciate you guys helping me because it helps me with school as well. And it, I'm just grateful that you guys help other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you all very much for joining us this evening. We appreciate it. We are honored to have Montgomery College in Tacoma Park and glad that you all could be here and hopefully we'll be able to see you all in person very soon. But thank you for joining us by Zoom. Night.
Thank you. And graduation is actually face-to-face this year.
Good.
Coming back for that. We're graduating the students whose last names begin with A to L on Thursday, May 19th, and from M to Z on Friday, May 20th. It'll be zoomed as well if you want to stop in and take a quick peek at folks as well, or we'd be glad to have you come to the Rockville campus and watch the ceremony. And thanks again to Mayor Stewart and all the members of the council for this wonderful, wonderful support for our students. I know they'll do us all proud. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Take care.
Next, oh, agenda, future agenda. Let's see, where are we? Monday night, April 25th, we continue our Monday evening me, budget meetings. Are we, we're starting at 7:30, right? Yeah, we're still going to start at 7:30. On Monday night, we'll review capital projects as well as a presentation on K9 units and license plate readers in the police department. Then on Wednesday, April 27th, we'll have our regular meeting here at 7:30. We will have a reading by our Tacoma Park poet laureate Kathleen O'Toole, because April is poetry month. And we'll have our public hearing on the FY 2023 tax rate and a public hearing on our FY 2023 budget. Our regular meeting will have first reading ordinance approving the FY 2022 Budget Amendment Number Four, second reading ordinance amending the Chapter 11.04 on Signs in Public Areas and Public Right-of-Way. Second reading ordinance amending Chapter 4.24 of the Tacoma Park Code regarding police employee retirement plans. Our work sessions next week will be on procurement of diesel fuel contract and vehicle for police department and a redistricting debrief next week. Then on Monday, May 2nd, we'll have our budget reconciliation meeting. And Wednesday, May 4th, we will have the second reading ordinance approving our FY 2022 Budget Amendment Number Four, single reading ordinance approving a contract for diesel fuel, single reading reading ordinance approving purchase of police vehicles, a resolution authorizing temporary street closures in support of the 2022 Old Tacoma Park Business Association event calendar, and possibly a work session on presentation of design plans for the community center renovation. Then on Wednesday, May 11th, we have Bike to Work Day proclamation and the first reading ordinance of our tax rate stormwater management budget and our FY 2023 budget. And then Wednesday, May 18th, we have the second reading of adopting our tax rate stormwater management budget and our FY 2023 budget. So that takes us to the end of May. Now we'll move on to public comments. First, we'll have public comments on voting items. Our voting items this evening, we have a number of them. The first three voting items are resolutions for appreciation to our departing director of HR, Tracy Smith, for our housing and community development director, Alex Cross, and for Grace Wiggins, and I just blanked on Grace's title, housing manager. Excuse me. Any public comments on those resolutions? Hey, seeing none, I'll move to the next. Then we have a resolution endorsing FY 21, 22, and 23 Community Development Block Grant projects. Any public comments on those? Seeing none. Next is first reading ordinance amending Chapter 11.04 to regulate signs in public areas and public right-of-way. Any public comments on that? Seeing none. Any public comments on the first reading ordinance amending Chapter 4.24, the Tacoma Park Code, the Police Employee's Retirement Plan? Seeing none. Then that concludes our voting sessions. And next, we have public comments on general matters. Any public comments on general matters?
... does not include the 51.95 cent constant yield property tax rate. It mentions the 3 cent increase over the current rate, but not the 5 cent increase over the constant yield rate. And it is not mentioned the 9.7% increase in property taxes. I hope the council will add this information before approving the budget. I also hope the council will change all mentions of tax investment to the clear tax increase. And I hope the council will limit the property tax rate to 55 cents, a 5.9 increase over constant yield, matching this year's Social Security and federal civil service retirement cost of living adjustment. The budget document lacks information on the full funding level for the equipment replacement reserve. I've asked for, but not yet received, the relevant spreadsheet, so I can't provide an exact figure. Last year, though, the full funding level was about $900,000. With inflation that's higher this year than last year, the figure will be higher than $900,000. I hope the council will fully fund the reserve. The proposed budget calls for an addition of $600,000. That's not only less than full funding, but also less than the roughly $730,000 shown on page 19 as being spent from the reserve this year. As in the past, I'll note that if the council commits to fully funding the reserve each year going forward, a couple of million dollars can responsibly be transferred to the general reserves. I'm happy to show the math to anyone interested. Given the roughly 10% increase in property taxes, I hope the council will increase property tax aid by 10% from $150,000 to $165,000. At a time requiring six feet of social distancing, I hope the council will zero out funding for retrofitting and installing the city's five-foot-wide sidewalks. And with the council having declared a climate emergency, I hope the council will zero out funding for road maintenance. Letting the roads deteriorate will discourage vehicle use and reduce the city's carbon footprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, Mary Jane Machui Ward, too. You already heard me about the tax proposal, property tax proposal. I spent hours on the phone trying to get my homeowner's tax credit because every winter a house makes less than $60,000 a year. Otherwise, I'd have to pay over $6,000 a month, which is extremely high. We just have a two-bedroom, tiny two-bedroom, one-bath home. And my son has, grown-up son has autism, and we shouldn't be sharing this space. It's like we're both neutered, kind of. We can't, you know, can't have sex or anything, you know? He's in a two-bedroom, one-tiny bathroom house. It's like there's no privacy. And we're still paying over $6,000 a year. So please consider when you make this tax hike to who you're going to, who's, you're going to tax height. Anyways, and thank you. And I want to thank you to also to Small Things Matter, because they have been bringing us some food, and I really appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank Lauren Sherkody, and has said she's going to come to her next Parents of Special Needs Adults Meeting, which you're always welcome to come to. It's on Zoom now on the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 to 7:30. Well, it starts depending on whether you're, you're a guest or not, 7:00 or 7:30. And you're all welcome to come to us. We, and also would like to still ask, I think this is just a matter of fairness, that the lower-income people getting $60,000 is my suggestion. Black Americans are born here, should get reparations. I really feel it strongly. I think we owe it. I think it's a matter of fairness. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Sandra Deena Grant, and I've been a resident of Tacoma Park, Maryland for 14 years. And it's a place that I call home. Recently, my building got sold, and the new owner has given us, on apparently, you know, April 4th day, we received our notice, 60-day notice to vacate the building. Four people who quartered Tacoma Park home are being displaced. Given that Tacoma Park wants to keep residents in place, it's, it's very disturbing to me that more hasn't really been done, especially with the TOPA tenant opportunity to purchase, which I had no idea what it was. And I rushed down here and talked to Grace Wiggins, who I guess is leaving soon, and a couple of other people, and they gave me some information, but it wasn't enough information. I told them I was clueless. I never thought about buying a building, but the opportunity was there. And I was like, great opportunity. Help me. What do I do? What's the next step? So what I'm asking is that having a great program like TOPA and DC just being across the border, who have the same program, but they actually give their residents real support. They help with the whole process. And being such close neighbors, I'm just thinking that Tacoma Park need to do the same, you know, allow, you know, given that our residents are, what, 50% more renters here in Tacoma Park? So I'm really asking that other people aren't put in my position. There's four of us that are really like looking low to moderate income people. Where are we going to live? What money do we have? The owner wants this month's rent, and we're saying, well, yes, but we're looking at 60 days, new accommodations, moving costs. So we're asking for help. And I came here and I was told I got three minutes, 45 seconds left. So really, it's like a cry for help, not just for me, because there's going to be other people that are going to be in the same position. And we thought, never thought that we were going to be displaced. We didn't think, it wasn't even on our radar, especially out of 2020 was like, great. 2021, all of a sudden, owner just wants to sell. And, you know, the displacement, it shouldn't happen. I tried to do what I could, but I didn't have enough knowledge. And so I'm asking, you know, let's do more with a great program to allow the residents to know what the next steps are. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and we'll make sure to get your information. And I, the city manager was speaking to you earlier, so thank you for coming this evening. Any other public comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Any council comments this evening? No, Councilmember Smith.
First, I want to remind everyone that I'm having a budget meeting this coming Tuesday, April 26th. It's virtual. It will be at 7:30, so anyone can join. I think it's really important so that we can address some of the issues that residents brought up today. I think the city, we're at a crossroads where we are going to be in the level of services that we're going to provide for residents. And Ms. Mary Jane Machui, thank you for your comments. I appreciate them, especially on the issue regarding reparations. That's something that I work on during the day. If you get an opportunity to read an op-ed that I helped put together for my executive director on reparations. So it's a very critical issue that the country needs to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. First of all, just wanted to say I enjoyed the reception for the city manager, and a very belated welcome. Obviously, you've been here for a while, but nice to celebrate. Just a couple of updates. Last week, I had the opportunity to go on a site visit with one of the members of the Grants Review Committee to visit Perskolus, which is a nonprofit in Silver Spring that has received grant funds from Tacoma Park for their training programs, where they provide an opportunity for people in the region to attend a, I believe it's a 15-week course, no charge to them, to learn tech skills to work in the IT field and cybersecurity. And it was a really fascinating visit, really great work going on there, and exciting that we have Tacoma Park residents who are taking part in it as well. So thank you for the work staff has done on those grants and also the Grants Committee as well. Today, we had a Transportation Planning Board meeting, and we discussed a number of items. We had a work session before the main meeting, and then the main meeting itself, where we focused on discussing the results of the Climate Mitigation, Climate Change Mitigation Survey, which Tacoma Park filled out, as well as other jurisdictions throughout the region, kind of noting our interest and willingness in pursuing a number of different climate change mitigation strategies. And so we're talking about how we can implement those things in the long-range transportation plan, and had some very robust and good discussions. I think there's still a long way to go on that, and I'll share more updates as we get them. But there look like there may be seven strategies that the TBB is prepared to adopt in our long-range plan related to climate change, which is a huge step forward, and I hope we'll be able to take additional steps as well. The other exciting thing that we did at TPB today was adopt the Transportation Land Use Grants, TLC. And Tacoma Park was awarded two of those grants, one for $60,000 and one for $70,000. And those are both for bike and ped improvements related to the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrade, as well as the New Ave Bike Way. So very exciting news, and thank you to our staff for working on that. And then finally, just want to remind residents in Ward Three that I'm having two virtual budget sessions to hear from you and share information about the budget. One is tomorrow evening at, I believe it's, one is at seven-thirty and one's at seven. I believe the one tomorrow is at, actually, I believe the one tomorrow is at eight, and the one next Thursday is at seven. But I will share that information out in my weekly email, so you get the right information. But would love to see people there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostick. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, thank you. I really enjoyed the spectacular on Saturday, so thank you to the Recreation Department for putting on so many festive events this past week. I'm also having budget drop-in sessions on Tuesday. They will be both virtual and outdoors. And one will be at lunchtime, twelve-thirty to one-thirty, and the other is seven-thirty to nine in Forest Park. And I will circulate the Zoom links. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Searcy.
Great. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank all of the folks who came out and provided feedback and comments tonight on the budget, as well as what we could do to better help residents in our community. I appreciate that feedback, and it's definitely something that we, as a council, can work on to ensure that people who are able to and want to stay here can continue to do so. So thank you so much for coming out tonight. Also, welcome, city manager. I know we're I know that we are quite a bit late, but we appreciate you and appreciate the work that you do for the city, so welcome.
A couple of quick updates. So for residents that live on Merwood Drive, between New Hampshire Avenue and Wildwood Drive, there is some work that is happening right now in terms of some concrete work to basically prep some of our curbs and gutter repairs for resurfacing that is expected to happen later this summer. So I just want to remind folks, again, I sent a note out on the list serve, but just to remind folks that there has been and will be work that is ongoing there. Also, just a quick reminder that the Crossroads Farmers Market is kicking off next Wednesday. Finally, we'll get a good lunch. It is on Wednesdays from ten-thirty AM to, I'm sorry, two-thirty PM on Wednesdays at Ann Street, near University Boulevard. So I want to encourage people to come out and enjoy the Crossroads Farmers Market. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and just a few quick points. One, I'll just also add my official welcome to Mr. Fox. I know he's been here eight and a half months or so, but we get around to it eventually. So thanks for everything there. I do want to thank those who participated in the two meetings I had yesterday on the budget. One was an in-person meeting outdoors. It was really, really cold, and I'm glad that a couple of people showed up because I would have been feeling sorry for myself. But in the evening, there was a Zoom meeting that I hosted as well to talk about the budget. We had about fourteen or fifteen people, which I think was the ideal number because it enabled us to really have a discussion and didn't just limit everybody to speaking once, which might have been the case had there been several dozen participants. So lots of good information, concerns that people expressed about the budget, and I'll be doing my best to incorporate as much of that as I can into the work that we do going forward on the budget. I wanted to just mention two other things. I had talked previously about the proposal for the construction of an apartment building in the parking lot of the Tacoma Metro Station. That's entirely located in the District of Columbia, but it's directly across the street from residential portions of Ward One. And there is a meeting on April twenty-fifth, that's Monday of next week, hosted by the ANC, the Advisory Neighborhood Commissioners in the district who represent the ANC areas that border Old Town and the area where the metro station is located. And anyone can participate in that meeting. And Monday's meeting, the agenda does include an explanation from UIA, the developer that's planning to build the project. And we're anticipating there will be a meeting sometime in May, specifically for residents of Tacoma Park to get information. But for now, you can participate in that ANC meeting. All you have to do is go to the ANC website, so it's ANC4B. That's the number of the Advisory Neighborhood Commission, ANC4B.com. And if you click on Agendas, then you'll see the April twenty-fifth agenda, and you can participate. I won't be able to be there because we have another budget meeting that night. And then lastly, I just want to say, people might have seen that I was participating up until this past Monday in recent meetings remotely, even though we're back in person, and that's because I got a mild case of COVID, and I'm fine now, other than an occasional cough. But it is serious, and I was glad that I was vaccinated. If you haven't gotten vaccinated or boosted, please do it. And although I know some of the guidelines about wearing masks are being loosened, I encourage people to continue doing that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. On that topic, I will say thank you to Laura Barclay and OTBA for setting up a clinic yesterday. I was able to get my second booster yesterday, so glad to do that. The other item I want to mention is that tomorrow, no, Friday evening, excuse me, at Montgomery College, Peace Jam, which is an organization that works with young people and Nobel laureates, will be having the two thousand and fourteen Nobel Laureate Kailash Sarathi Rati speaking on Compassion Action that evening. And he is being introduced by Kieran Kosher-McCabe, who was one of our first youth council president's chair, I can't remember what we called them. But so she's gonna do that, and I'm gonna be there as well. So I believe you can still sign up for that if you'd like to. And I actually had a question for Councilwoman Dibala because she did not mention the county's action on building energy performance standards.
Yes, it passed unanimously. Sorry. So to fill in this sentence, many of you who are interested in climate change action have been following the county's progress on performance standards for larger buildings. And there are some in Tacoma Park that will be covered by this new program, which will address set standards for energy efficiency for buildings that are twenty-five thousand square feet, existing buildings, for twenty-five thousand square feet and up. And so it did pass unanimously. On, yeah, yesterday.
Yesterday. Yep. Well, thank you, and I know you did work on that and help push it, so thank you for your work on that. All right, I think that's it, and I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor, members of council, first I'll just start off my comments. Just want to thank you for the reception this evening. Better late than never. And really appreciated my leadership team and other staff and members of the community coming out to meet me, to welcome me, and also to share some of their concerns and challenges that we have here in the community and to hear their perspectives on the budget and operations. And look forward to more in-depth conversations with other members in the community as the weeks and months ahead. I'll touch on, Councilmember Kostick touched on the city award of the two COG TLC grants. The sixty thousand dollar grant is the Metropolitan Branch Trail Upgrade, and the funding is gonna go towards preliminary designs for a redesign of the MBT, including resurfacing and widening of the trail, new trail lighting, and improved pedestrian crossings to the Bell Segler Park in Montgomery College. And then the seventy thousand dollar grant is for the New Ave Bike Way District Connector, Section D. Funding will go towards preliminary designs for the southern stretch of the New Ave Bike Way. This will connect the southern tip of the Section B at New Hampshire and Poplar to the existing bike lane network, starting at Kansas Ave Northeast at the DC border. And I just want to just recognize and thank our hard staff who actually put together these grants, Ms. Roz Grigsby and Mr. Alex Friedman in our Planning Division. Kudos to them. And the last thing I'll touch on this evening is we've had several changes in the organization. And as one speaker stated this evening, and Madam Mayor touched on the resolutions that we have this evening, in our Human Resources and our Housing and Community Development Department, we have some leadership roles that's changing this month. As you know, the departures of Ms. Tracy Smith, who's our Human Resources Director, and Mr. Alex Cross, who was the Housing and Community Development Director, as well as Ms. Grace Wiggins, our Housing Services Manager, as well as Jen Hale, our Grants Coordinator, will be moving on from their positions. The contributions of Ms. Smith, Ms. Wiggins, Ms. Hale, and Mr. Cross to our organization have been invaluable, and I would like to personally thank them for their incredible service to our city, to this organization, to the residents. And in the interim, I'm proud to announce that this afternoon that we made it official that Ms. Lori Cannon will serve as the Acting Human Resources Director, and Mr. David Eubanks will serve as the Acting Housing and Community Development Director as of Friday at five PM. And during this transition, I just ask that people, council staff, just be patient and show a little grace as we go through this transition. It's gonna be tough for the organization, but I know that we're gonna rise to the occasion. We've already posted the job announcements, so we'll be looking for great talent to come in and fill the big shoes that these individuals have left this organization. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I think that's a good segue into our first voting items. And I ask people just to bear with me, because I'd actually like to read these resolutions out loud in honor of the staff who are moving on. The first resolution is expressing appreciation to Tracy Smith for her service as Tacoma Park Human Resources Director, whereas Tracy Smith became the Human Resources Director of the City of Tacoma Park on August nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas Ms. Smith assumed her leadership role at a time when the Human Resource Department had limited staffing capacity and inefficient procedures resulting from staff turnover and a lack of automation. And whereas with the onset of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, Ms. Smith facilitated the transition of a large portion of the city's workforce to remote work for the first time in the city's history. And whereas Ms. Smith implemented the city's telework policy, which promoted work-life balance by allowing flexible scheduling options for city staff. And whereas Ms. Smith oversaw the creation of the city's COVID-nineteenth health and safety protocols to lower exposure risks for both staff and residents. And whereas Ms. Smith automated several core departmental tasks by launching electronic personnel and benefit forms on the city's website, implementing online healthcare enrollment, and introducing an online ticket support system to track staff requests. And whereas Ms. Smith developed an online recruiting and onboarding process, as well as played an important role in the multi-year leave audit process. And whereas Ms. Smith entered personnel budget amounts for all departments through three budget cycles, ensuring sufficient financial resources to cover personnel costs each year. And whereas, thanks to Ms. Smith's skills, knowledge, and legal background, she was an asset to city management and her colleagues in improving interdepartmental operations, managing labor relations, hiring for key leadership positions, including the city's current city manager, and regulating compliance with city policies. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Tacoma Park that great appreciation is given to Tracy Smith for her over two years of distinguished service to the people, council, and staff of the City of Tacoma Park. And be it further resolved that best wishes are extended to Ms. Smith in her next professional chapter. Would someone please like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Searcy moved, Councilwoman Kostick second. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Wonderful. Next, we have a resolution expressing appreciation to Alex Cross for his service as Tacoma Park Housing and Community Development Director. Whereas Alex Cross became the Housing and Community Development Director of the City of Tacoma Park on August sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, and assumed management of a department that had been without a director for several years, with position vacancies limiting staff capacity. And whereas, at the time Mr. Cross was hired, the city was still recovering from the socioeconomic repercussions of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, with many of the city's low-income residents disproportionately impacted, placing increased demands on HCD's community services. And whereas, Mr. Cross acted quickly to fill vacant positions, reorganize departmental workflows, streamline business processes, redistribute workflows, and start stalled community projects. And whereas, during Mr. Cross's tenure, the department brought in almost one point eight million dollars in grant funds for projects ranging from bikeways to housing affordability to the Tacoma Park Recreation Center, and distributed rental assistance to vulnerable households, grants for local nonprofits, and grants to small businesses. And whereas, Mr. Cross provided strategic vision for the use of the ARPA funds to expand HCD services and accelerate priority projects, resulting in three point seven million dollars in ARPA funds devoted to HCD projects, including the Multifamily Rehabilitation Fund and the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Business Incubator. And whereas, Mr. Cross advised city management on complex issues, including emergency assistance for seven families displaced by the Mapleview Fire, housing code updates, and rent stabilization. And whereas, Mr. Cross oversaw community outreach around the Public Space Management Plan that provided exemplary strategies for engaging residents across all wards using innovative and equitable measures. And whereas, Mr. Cross emphasized collaboration with other departments and encouraged best practices exchanged to enhance internal operations. And whereas, Mr. Cross assisted in citywide initiatives beyond his own department, engendering respect from his colleagues as a strong communicator, hands-on manager, and servant leader. And now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Tacoma Park that great appreciation is given to Alex Cross for his service to the people, council, and staff of the City of Tacoma Park. And be it further resolved that best wishes are extended to Mr. Cross in his future endeavors. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Kovar moved. Do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Next, we have a resolution honoring Grace Wiggins for her service to the residents of Tacoma Park, whereas Grace Wiggins became the Housing and Community Services Manager for the City of Tacoma Park on September fourth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas, during her tenure as the Housing and Community Services Manager, Ms. Wiggins expanded the scope and reach of the Housing and Community Development Department. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins spearheaded many programs designed to enhance the quality of life of Tacoma Park residents, particularly Tacoma Park renters. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins was critical in the drafting, adoption, and execution of the city's Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins spent countless hours engaging residents in their homes, their neighborhoods, and their places of worship. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins guided residents through times of crisis and emergency, and her efforts provided financial and emotional stability to residents in need. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins played a critical role in the city's COVID-nineteen response efforts, facilitating public health outreach to multifamily buildings and connecting vulnerable households with emergency assistance programs. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins was instrumental in the passage of ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash forty-nine requiring window guard requirements in multifamily units as a protective measure for young children in Tacoma Park. And whereas, Ms. Wiggins led affordable homeownership efforts in the city, including the successful conversion of Form 2 rental units to affordable homes at seventy-four oh-two Garland Avenue and three-twenty Lincoln Avenue. And whereas, in her time serving the residents of the City of Tacoma Park, Ms. Wiggins truly made an impact and improved the lives of the residents of the City of Tacoma Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the Council of the City of Tacoma Park gratefully acknowledged and extends deep thanks for and the unwavering service and commitment of Ms. Wiggins in her time as the Housing and Community Services Manager. Would someone like to pass the resolution? Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilmember Dibala, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Wonderful. And again, thank you to the staff. We wish you luck in your next adventures. And again, just thank you for all that you've done for the city. Our next voting item is a resolution endorsing the FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two, and FY twenty-three Community Development Block Grant projects. I think this has not changed since our work session. Anything to add, city manager? No, we're good? Okay. Would someone like to pass that resolution, move the resolution? The Councilmember Smith moved. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, next, we have a first reading ordinance amending Chapter eleven. Okay, next, we have a first reading ordinance amending Chapter 11.04 to regulate signs in public areas and public right-of-ways. We had a work session on this a couple of weeks ago and gave feedback to our city attorney. I don't know if the city manager has anything to say, or should I just turn it over to the city attorney? Okay, I'll turn it over to our city attorney. Just to walk us through some of the changes that were made. Seeing if we have any other comments and asking it to be moved.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to the city manager as well. Some of the changes based on the work session, which are listed in the cover memorandum, the changes to the ordinance following the work session are clarifying the council's purpose in updating and revising the sign ordinance, clarifying the meaning of public area by removing references to rights of way and adjacent to rights of way, increasing the size of permissible signs to 24 inches in any dimension, and then including express language permitting removal of non-compliant signs. For example, a sign that remains after 14 days, after the 14-day period would be non-compliant and then could be removed, and then making other language changes for consistency. I believe a question was asked with respect to what a Class D offense is. From an enforcement perspective, I couldn't remember the dollar amount of the fine, but it is a municipal infraction with a $100 fine for the first offense and a $200 fine for each repeat offense. So I believe that's the extent of the changes and the questions that were asked. There was, I think, one other question was asked at the work session regarding Pepco. And my recollection, or my understanding is staff met, Ms. Braithwaite, Director of Polk Works, met with Pepco. Pepco's position is nobody touches its signs. If there's a sign on there that needs to be removed, then they're to be contacted and they'll come and remove it. They don't permit any signs to be posted on their poles.
Thank you. Councilwoman DiBala, did you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify, so Pepco's position is no signs on utility poles, and they will handle removals if they're called, not the city.
That is what my understanding of what was represented to Ms. Braithwaite is.
Okay. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, I thank you. I did have a few questions. And I had asked the city attorney about a couple of these things by email, but I just wanted to make sure that I knew where we were on them. So first of all, in the C2 section where it talks about the manner of posting, and it says that no sign can be posted by using glue or other adhesives, and must use removable tape, tacks, or staples. And it doesn't say one way or the other whether it would be acceptable to do the kind of signs that get planted in ground, which is often the case for either political signs or real estate open house signs and the like. So assuming that they are otherwise compliant, would that be acceptable under this as well?
Yes.
Okay. Secondly, with regard to political signs specifically, I just want to, I know we have to treat everything the same in terms of content, but if a sign is posted, I'm not talking about it was in someone's yard because they can keep a sign there as long as they want, as I understand it, but in a public area, since we know the election date, would a campaign sign be similar to a sign advertising an upcoming meeting? Meaning that it would only be able to be up there for roughly the two weeks leading up to the election? Is that how you would interpret this?
Well, the way the ordinance is written is that any sign has a two-week limit. So that would include campaign signs.
Okay. But would people be able to take one down and put it up somewhere else and have a rolling series of two weeks? I just want to make sure I understand how that would work.
The ordinance does not prohibit that.
Okay. And then just a few other questions. It says it's a violation to, it's not a violation to remove a sign that violates the requirements of the ordinance. And that means a resident can remove a sign if it's not compliant. Say if the event has passed and it's still up there, and the people who put it up don't remove it, any resident would be able to remove that and dispose of it? Is that a fair reading of that?
So I don't really want to be in a position of going into hypotheticals about when a resident may remove something and may not. But, but there is, there is at least a scenario in which that could be done, and it would not violate the ordinance.
Okay. And then just the last thing, and this is really more from my colleagues. We had originally had 20 inches in there, and I suggested to make it 24. I actually measured a few political signs, and there's two standard types of the kind that plant on the sticks. And one standard size is 26 inches, not 24 inches. So I was just gonna propose that we say the maximum could be 26 inches instead of 24 inches. And I would, at the appropriate time, Mayor, when we're actually considering this officially, I'm not sure we've moved it yet, I would, I would propose that amendment. Otherwise, thank you to the city attorney. And I appreciate all the other changes that were made in response to the questions that we got.
Councilwoman Kostick. Thank you, and thank you to the city attorney for answering a couple of my questions by email. I also had the question that Councilmember Kovar raised with regard to election signs and the 14-day limit. So I think that's something we will need as a city to make sure we do a lot of education on around election time so that candidates understand that. The other thing I wanted to clarify with regard to that is that the date it is posted requirement will also be required for election signs in those public places. Is that correct?
Yes, the same standard applies to all signs.
So that's something I think is not, not standard practice. So I think that it'll just be important that people do that if they're putting signs in the public right-of-way. My other question was just with regard to the, the manner of posting. And I, I understand why we have the provision about not using glue. Just thinking through in terms of where people actually are allowed to post things, I'm not sure there's anything actually for them to adhere things to, for the most part. Maybe there are, maybe there would be a bulletin board in one of these locations. But just, I'm having a hard time imagining where people might adhere things to in most of the places where they'd be allowed to put them. It seems like it's more or less people putting signs into the ground with stakes. Am I misunderstanding that?
I'm not sure that I would be able to answer that from a practical perspective. I just, my understanding is that there was a desire for this language to remain based on prior experiences. But I can't offer a practical where that might be on the ground.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any problem with that. I think as long as there's nothing in the city that we wouldn't want people to adhere something to that they might be allowed to with that provision, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to double back on the new definition of city property. So, so the change was made to not include the right-of-way because the, it varies in width, and a lot of it is in front of people's houses, and they think it's their lawn. But in switching over, I want to make sure we haven't missed anything important. So this is no sign shall be permitted on any real property that contains a city of Tacoma Park building facility or recreational park. So I had asked a question about wooded areas such as Dorothy's Woods. And it turns out, just in case if anyone else had that question, that in the covenant, it specifically addresses that. But I wonder if there are other city paper streets or little bits of corners here and there that belong to the city that are not associated with somebody's property, somebody's front lawn, that we might be missing. I just want to make sure we're not creating a loophole by accident here as we switch over. What's your thought?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember DiBala. So the version of the sign ordinance that was suspended used the language "public areas." There was a thought process that indicated that perhaps we could be more precise by utilizing rights of way based on, as well, in addition. Based on the discussion at the work session, council raised a number of valid concerns about the term "rights of way" and some of the problems that caused. So the language regarding "rights of way" was struck from the draft. It was never in ordinance language. So I just, I would just want to be clear with respect to that. And then regarding your questions related to paper streets and other property like that, I think that those would not necessarily be public areas. There's a possibility that they could be. But you know, if, we would have to look at those on a case-by-case basis. But as the language in the ordinance is currently written, unless it's a Tacoma Park building facility or recreational park, it would not be covered.
I think the intent of this that we talked about in the work session was that we didn't want a sign there that then looked like, looked that the city was endorsing something.
Right, right. I understand.
So, yeah, so that's why, so I just make sure that the intent is there, which is if it's on a paper street and we're not sure whether or not it's a city or not, I don't think that becomes an issue. You know what I'm saying?
Okay. So this does not prohibit, this only prohibits in those specific kinds of properties. I guess this, I want to make sure I've got that right.
That's correct.
Okay. As opposed to the more general in any public area?
That's, yes, there's a distinction between those two.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your work on this. I just, I wanted clarification on the question on political signs. As I understand what you said, speaking with Councilmember Kovar, is that political signs must be removed within 14 days of their posting? Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Siemens, and the reason for that, we have to treat them the same way because i- if we don't, we're elevating one form, or giving preferential treatment to one form of speech over another. So in other words, you know, commercial speech, 14 days, but political speech would be longer or shorter, whatever, whatever council's will is. So the legally correct thing to do is treat them all the same way.
So if, for example, I or someone else was to run for county council, I could post a lawn sign, or have my supporters post a lawn sign, and that would have to be taken down within 14 days? Or if it's on a private property, it can stay longer?
If it's on a private property, the ordinance would not apply to it.
Okay, and so the political signs that we frequently see along, surrounding the polling places would still be okay? Or, I mean, that's separate from the duration, but that was another question from last time.
Right, so, so there's language inserted, or that is included regarding the application of federal, state, and local law. And there is a state law regarding the placement of signs at a polling place, provided, you know, the city has established it as a polling place. And under those circumstances, that state law would control.
And so that state law is okay to be different between political signs and commercial signs?
That is, that's, yes.
That was a.
Because the state has made that determination.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Searcy.
Thank you, city attorney. Quick question. So the highlighted language on line 41, 42, where the city may only remove signs that are not in compliance with the content-neutral time, place, and manner. So I'm trying to make sure that I understand. I think maybe we're, we're just missing a comma, but the content neutrality of the sign is a little confusing for me because we, it seems as if, you know, there was other language that, you know, that we were really striving to not try to regulate the messaging per se. So how are we defining content neutral?
Right, and, and that's, that's, I very much appreciate you keen on this section, Councilmember, because that language is specific language taken from First Amendment jurisprudence. And, and it is designed, content neutral means that the city is not regulating the content of the signs. And then the time, place, and manner restrictions, the courts have held that it is reasonable to create regulations that are content neutral that regulate the time of the speech, or, you know, the duration, if you will, the location, and the manner in which it's posted. For example, matter would be the size of the sign. So that is there to try and bolster the legal defensibility of the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, the city attorney. Now would someone like to, I think we could probably do, make that change, Councilmember Kovar to 24 to 26, unless anyone had an objection to that? All right, let's change that from 24 to 26, and then ask if someone like to move the ordinance? Councilmember Kovar moved, do I have a second? Councilwoman Searcy second. Any other discussion or questions? Or amendments to propose? Seeing none. All those in favor of the ordinance amending Chapter 11.04, regulating signs, regulating signs in public areas and public rights of way, and making non-substantive changes for consistency? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Oh, Councilmember Smith, I'm sorry, did you have a question on that?
I oppose.
Okay. Councilmember Smith opposes. And I think just in the heading, there's, it says regulating signs twice to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to our city attorney, and I think you were done for the night, for us, with us, right?
I, I think I have to stick around for the next one, but unless, unless you don't.
Oh, no, right, yes, you should just stick around just in case. Excuse me. The next is the first reading ordinance amending Chapter 4.24 of the Tacoma Park Code, Police Employees Retirement Plan, to change the application process for the Deferred Retirement Option Program. And if the city manager has anything to say on this one?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting, council asked for some clarification on some of the language that we had in, in this ordinance. We followed up with the city attorney to make it clear, particularly around the 60-day language that was in there, to make it more clear. And in this ordinance here, we made that language a little bit clearer for the retroactivity. And we put in, the city attorney put in the language for the delays and allowing the retroactivity from June 30th to July 31, and make it more plain language. I don't know, city attorney, if you have any, anything to add to that?
No, thank you, city manager.
Wonderful. Anyone have any other questions before I ask for this to be moved? Seeing none, would someone like to move the first reading ordinance amending Chapter 4.24 of the Tacoma Code on Police Employee Retirement Plan? Councilwoman DiBala moved, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick second. Any other comments, changes, amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that moves. Now I think we are done. Thank you to the city attorney. Now we are done with our voting session and we will now move to our work session and we, our first work session this night. Tonight is an update from Adventist Healthcare on proposed healthcare services in Tacoma Park. Do I want to, the city manager want to say something first or?
First, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to welcome Andrew Nicholas to the stand. He is the Deputy General Counsel and Director of Government Relations. For Adventist Healthcare. Andrew and his colleagues who are also joining us this evening remotely. Have been working closely with myself and Mayor Stewart, as well as council members Dibala and Kovar. To refine the proposal for additional healthcare services in Tacoma Park. So his presentation this evening will focus on the new offices proposed. So we look forward to your presentation. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for having me here. I appreciate you taking the time to hear me out on this and good to see everyone in person. This is. First, we had the legislative session just ended in Annapolis, got down there a couple of times. Nice to be kind of getting back to some normalcy. Hopefully it maintains. Jumping in, just as you know, this is not the first time you've heard from me. I originally proposed or presented this proposal to this group back in November. And as the deputy city manager mentioned, since that time, we've engaged in a work group with representatives from the city. To really dig into that proposal in detail for us at Adventist to share our vision for what we were proposing. And to hear feedback from the city representatives. And that's what we're presenting here today. That's this proposal. And just want to thank all the members of that work group for their collaboration and input on that. I thought it was a very fruitful process and I hope you will agree. So just kind of brief overview, the core services that are being proposed remain the same from the last proposal. We're talking about. Supporting a behavioral health crisis response center here in Tacoma Park, establishing a primary care office. With embedded behavioral health counseling as well. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the proposal or at least receive the proposal. It is augmented with additional information as requested outlining kind of the services that will be provided. And provide the number of different information. I'll draw your attention there. Hopefully you've received, there's a crosswalk of specific issues. These were things that came through in the work group that we know are important to the city. And so wanted to try to attempt to pull those out and highlight sort of a FAQ page. And where you can find additional information on those specific items within the proposal itself. So I hope that made its way to you. But jumping in to the services that we're proposing, first up is the Behavioral Health Crisis Response Center. So this is a center that would provide support for individuals that are experiencing an acute behavioral health crisis. Having something like this in the city would afford the opportunity for these individuals to be assessed locally. And provided, you know, in real time counseling or therapeutic services, as well as be connected to a physician to receive. You know, medication that they may need, maybe they've run out of or gone off of, which is often the case in these situations. And that could all be done locally without having to, you know, travel an extended distance either to a hospital or to another emergency center. So this is really something that's a collaboration with, between Adventist Healthcare, Montgomery County and the city. To be clear, this is not something that we are saying we'd come in and set up and do. Adventist Healthcare doesn't do crisis response centers. But certainly we will work as a partner to support establishing one here. And to demonstrate that support, Adventist Healthcare will donate. Space to house the center. We've got two units available within the medical office building on the former hospital campus. That our senior behavioral health leaders have evaluated and feel are appropriate for this space. So either one of those could work. And then we will also assist in recruiting the medical staff for the center. And I'll be honest with you, that's going to be the most challenging part. I'm sure you've heard of the kind of healthcare workforce crisis, but we are a large behavioral health provider, so we are connected to the pipeline of workers in that space. And would assist in that as well. And then sort of to the broader scope of this, glad that we can connect Tacoma Park. To the Nexus Montgomery Behavioral Health Work Group. That's where a lot of the decisions the county's making now. About how to expand and establish the sort of behavioral crisis response infrastructure in the county are being made. And so Tacoma Park can be at the table and their voice can be heard and considers those decisions are being made up there and certainly will support. You know, establishing a center on this end of the county because there's one now being developed in Rockville. Next up, a primary care office. So first off, we do feel this is meeting a need for the city of Tacoma Park. There are fewer primary care physicians per capita in Tacoma Park than there are in the rest of the county. You can see here nine hundred sixty-two patients. Per provider in Tacoma Park versus the county, seven hundred and thirty-two patients per provider. And that discrepancy increases the further south you get in Tacoma Park. Further away from Silver Spring, you get the less providers you have. So we do think there is. Definite value of bringing this service into, into the city. And we also see a high demand for this service. You'll see here from July to December two thousand and one, over two hundred appointments with AHC physicians within five miles of Tacoma Park were made. Solely from Project Access members. Now I'll take a minute and explain what that. Project Access is a county-run program that provides access to healthcare services for lower income community members. Without insurance. So they become members of this program and then various providers sign up to participate in the program. And see these patients. Adventist Healthcare's practitioners are all members. And so we've seen our physicians' offices. You know, around the area saw two hundred appointments in just that timeframe from just these members. So we know there is demand for care, particularly among, you know, that population. So jumping into kind of the operations, so kind of the key benefit for primary care. Is that you get preventative care and chronic care treatment. This is care, preventative care, your, you know, annual wellness. You know, annual screenings, you get wellness checks, physicals. These are the things that help keep us healthy, lead to early detection of any issues. Before they become, you know, a crisis or more acute and require something more, you know, extreme level of care. And then chronic care treatment, you know, things like diabetes can be managed and maintained with a physician that you have a relationship with, understands you. What's going on in your life. Again, preventing that from escalating to something more serious. That's really at the heart of primary care services. The office would be established in a convenient location because again, in that same medical office building on the former campus, a separate unit. And that has already been renovated for this purpose. The work group members were able to join us for a tour. Actually, we started with a tour of. A Adventist Primary Care Office in Silver Springs. You kind of get the feel, they got the feel for how that worked and what that looks like once it's up and running. And then we came down toward the proposed space here in Tacoma Park. I mean, I think it looks nice, looks like a doctor's office. There's three. Exam rooms, a lot of natural light. And it's in that medical office building where folks are already, there's other providers already in there. They're used to going there. For medical care. And even the mayor noted, the building looks good. The owners, it's not Adventist Healthcare. We don't own that building or that land. It's separate from. You know, the rest of the property there. Have invested in the building. It looks nice. It's a place you'd want to come and get care. So we think that's a very. A viable option to have a thriving practice. The, oh, I think I forgot. It would be staffed with a family care practitioner, a medical assistant, as well as a support staff. At, it would run from Monday through Friday, eight to five, but it would also have a twenty-four seven live call-in line. So at any point in time, you could call in. And you would speak to a real person and they could help you, you know, navigate whatever issue you're having. At that level of staff and hours, the office could serve about eighteen to twenty patients per day. And I'll tell you, if that level or actually if, if the office begins to sustain about fifteen to eighteen patients per day. We would look on to bring on additional providers and expand services. We actually have an option to expand significantly into an adjacent. Office on that floor. So that option is certainly there. The office would serve patients from age sixteen years and older. And that's really because it's the industry standard. Internists generally do not treat folks younger than sixteen. That's when they, you know, you're going to your pediatrician. So for the younger folks, we would develop relationships with local pediatrician's office to refer family members. You know, families with younger children. And in fact, there is a fairly large pediatrician office on the same floors where we're planning this. Primary care office. So that would be, I think, super convenient for families. And we do expect that this will cover others. A slide to this in just a second. About potentially over eighty percent of the age range of the patients. That we're seeing at the urgent care right now. So even though there is that age limitation, it does capture most of the folks we believe that are going into the urgent care. And then you get the added bonuses of this, of the primary care, unlike the urgent care participating in that project access. All of our community-based physicians. Primary care specialists participate in the, in the project access. So not only would those members gain access to the primary care. If they needed to be referred to a specialist, we could easily refer them to one of, one of our specialists who also participates in that program. So really opening up a continuum of care. I'll just make a couple of notes. This is in no way restrictive. No one needs to have a prior relationship with Adventist Healthcare or even heard of Adventist Healthcare before coming to this office. It is not limited to working with Adventist Healthcare providers. If you have a family member who's, you know, you want to see for a specialty. Service, we will refer you to that person, of course. It's just, we do have and have invested or proud of building. The largest clinically integrated network of physicians actually in the state. And so clinically integrated, meaning everybody works off the same electronic medical record. Just facilitates patient care and transfers. So it's easiest within that network, but certainly it's in no way limiting. All right, so moving on to, oh, this just is kind of demonstrates what I was talking about earlier with the age range. As you can see here, the about eighty-three percent of the age range of patients seen at the urgent care are over eighteen. So, you know, throw in some sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, you're well over eighty percent. So we'll capture most of the folks there at the primary care. Behavioral health counseling. Now this is a service that will be embedded in the primary care office located in the same office. Again, the real kind of key here with behavioral counseling is it is preventative, just like the primary care. Preventing folks from going into or from experiencing that acute crisis, sustained therapy sessions, sustained medication management. Helps keep people, you know, balanced and on the right path. But when folks do experience that, that crisis, unfortunate crisis. Having this service locally will enable a local referral to be made to a provider right there in the community to hopefully. Get them back on, on track and not have that episode again. So operationally, we will plan on starting out by bringing someone physically to the office to see patients once a week. But of course, telehealth would be available five days a week. This, this service, unlike the physical care side. Will serve children, adolescents, adults and older adults, the whole, whole range folks. And currently, these services are available right now in Spanish and English, but recognizing the amazing diversity that you have here. In Tacoma Park, we'll certainly look to explore providing those in additional languages. I know there's a significant Ethiopian population, so America or others. You know, we'll work towards that as well. And then additionally, kind of a unique thing is we offer free mental health workshops. I mentioned this last time, but just quickly in case you forgot, these could be on a range of topics from mindfulness. To coping with stress or anxiety or depression to healthy eating. And they are available both in person and virtually. They've been very popular, very successful. We did about fifty of them last year. So far this, this year, we've done about fifteen. So we can bring those programs down to Tacoma Park as well. And we could look to target these programs, again. Recognizing the incredible diversity, cultural diversity that's here in Tacoma Park to target them to specific communities. Whether it's Ethiopian, French African or Hispanic or other communities, because everybody kind of experiences different issues, so we could work towards that as well. This just shows the incredible kind of success rate we've been having with telehealth in behavioral health. Our, our no-show rate since we started ramping up telehealth, even pre-COVID, has just been amazing, down to eleven percent from twenty-six percent in twenty seventeen. And here you can see how popular it has been over the last two years with patients. And I'll, I'll mention, unlike. This is actually different from what we're seeing in, like, in physical health. So during the height of COVID, everyone was doing everything virtually, including your doctor's visits. We thought, we didn't know, will that continue to people like that, that convenience? Turns out on the physical side, they want to come in. Folks want their doctor to see them, examine them, talk to them face to face. So they're coming back. Behavioral health, it has remained steady and constant. It makes sense. If you think about it, it's a service that, it's meeting a need that really can make it difficult to go out and get an appointment. And now all you do, you know, you can pull up your phone and have a therapy session. So it's really been, it's really been incredible and we've seen that continue. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about our experience and what's going on.
Actually, Andrew, before you go on, I think one of the things on the behavioral health that you mentioned too is that if someone doesn't have access and needs to. A private room, they can come in and do their telehealth.
Yes, absolutely. So if, yeah, if you don't have the capability to do a telehealth visit, we will have a room with a computer and a screen. So you can come into the office and have a telehealth visit, because that's certainly, we don't want that, telehealth, it's supposed to expand access, not be a barrier. So if you can get in there and there's still the bus route over to that drop off there, and so you can come in and access that service there as well. So with the, with the urgent care, so AHC has actually transitioned away from urgent care operations. We have contracted with a third-party operator for our three other urgent cares in Laurel. Germantown and Rockville. Not the one in Tacoma Park, we're required and are still operating that one, but for those, those other three. We've actually contracted a third-party operator. Really, that's part of, we're focusing on our kind of system-wide goal of. Community-based preventative care. That's why we've doubled down on our primary care network, work to establish that broad network of community providers. And the urgent care was just kind of not really aligned with, with that goal. It's a little bit different. But at the time that this was done, we were fully committed to the urgent care. We'd actually shortly, I think before this, transitioned them all entirely in-house. To really try to give it, give it a go. We invested in this, in this center, but we just continued to experience low volumes. At this particular center especially. And of course, those low volumes have resulted in significant financial losses. That just makes sustaining this particular center really not feasible. And I'll say, not that the goal should be or is. Of healthcare to make as much money as possible, but certainly sustaining services at these levels losses is just something that's not particularly feasible. So that's, that's what we've been, and then compound that with the staffing challenges that exist everywhere, and it's been particularly challenging. Just to kind of let you know kind of where we are, the numbers we've been seeing, these are our total visits and you can see the three centers in nineteen, twenty and twenty-one. Tacoma Park there at the bottom is just always lagging significantly behind for the visit totals. Give you a minute to look at that. And then. Here's the average visits per day. And again, same thing, just Tacoma Park is, for whatever reason, just lagged behind the other three. And it's just not being utilized. So let's kind of talk about what's compare primary care and urgent care, how they're similar, how they're different. So starting off, most patients can be seen for most issues at either one. They are very similar. They, they. I mentioned the kind of age issue earlier, but they treat nearly all the same diagnoses. They accept the Tacoma Park and urgent care and AHC primary care accept the exact same insurance. In fact, interestingly, there's a, we see a very similar payer mix. That's the forms of payment that very patients have used to pay for their, their care. Very similar payer mix at the Tacoma Park urgent cares we see at our primary care office in Silver Spring. So it's a very similar population that we think we're seeing. And neither one treats, you know, emergency, life-threatening conditions. If you show up at an urgent care or primary care and you're having a heart attack, they're calling you an ambulance. Of course, the main difference really is appointments versus walk-in. An urgent care, you can, you can do walk-ins. And the primary care does, generally speaking, require an appointment. Now, if you show up at the primary care office and you don't have an appointment. You know, nobody's going to yell at you and tell you to get out. They'll engage with you, talk to you. If there's an availability that day, they'll get you in. But, you know, they'll look to schedule you as soon as they, as soon as they can. That's, that's clearly, you know, the main difference between them. But the benefit for the primary care, again, is that continuity of care, being able to develop a relationship with a provider. As opposed to the urgent care, which is more transactional. You know, you've got the sniffles, you go in, you get the sniffles medicine, you leave, you know, you go in again, you'll see somebody else. So, you know, that's when you get with the primary cares, when you do those regular annual screenings and your wellness checks and leads to a better overall health. Generally for people and communities. So just to kind of highlight what I was talking about here, looking at patients, some of the patient diagnoses that we've seen at the urgent care. This is at the Tacoma Park urgent care. Here we took a sampling of about five thousand approximate total diagnosis. Of those, ninety-three percent would be treatable at a primary care. So we're covering most things. Seven percent would not be. Some of them would be treatable in urgent care, but some not. Some would require, you know, an ED. And so here you see some of the more common diagnoses that would require either an emergency room or a, or an urgent care. And some of those are really emergency room only. Oh, this just shows, so of the top twenty diagnoses that we saw at Tacoma Park urgent care, all. care, all twenty of them are treatable at a primary, at, at, at a primary care. And those twenty themselves make up sixty percent of the overall diagnosis that we saw at the urgent care. So majority of the diagnosis, all treatable at, at, at a primary care. So this is the, the payer mix that, that I mentioned earlier, and it's just kind of an interesting point. So this is the payer mix that we've seen at the urgent care. And as you can see, seventy, by and far and away, it was mostly commercial, folks came and had mostly commercial insurance. That's Care First, United, Aetna, your private insurers. Ten percent Medicaid, twelve percent Medicare, and then kind of the rest fall in between. Looking over at the primary care office, the Adventist primary care office on Colesville Road in Silver Spring, similar, but not exactly the same, forty-four percent commercial insurance, twelve percent Medicaid patients, but thirty-eight percent Medicare. And that tells you, your, your retirees, they prefer to go to their doctor, to, to a primary care office, and, and that's certainly a population that tends to need more healthcare services. So I think in particular, you know, primary care office would be a benefit to the older So this is something else that came out of the work group, heard loud and clear interest around the marketing strategy. So we have developed a comprehensive and robust traditional marketing strategy. It's about a hundred thousand dollar initial investment, and it includes television ads, internet, social media, Facebook, digital radio ads, the local newspaper, newsletters, the Senior Beacon, El Tiempo, things of that nature. And, and this is an advertised strategy that it, it's not, it's not just going to happen once, and then we pray people see it and that it works out. It is scheduled, part of routine practice, it happens on a recurring basis. Not all of them at the same time, but, you know, some of them are yearly, some of them more, more than once a year. But in addition to this, and we heard this again from, from the work group, Adventist Healthcare is going to engage the local community. We understand that's very important, and so we are committed to doing that. We're going to reach out to places like the Crossroads Farmers Market. We will establish a presence there, whether it's by having our own booth or partnering with someone else to distribute, you know, promotional materials, educational materials, let folks know we're here, where we are, what we're doing, and how they can get access to care. We'll distribute flyers directly to local businesses, again, engaging folks directly, something they can post and hopefully spread by word of mouth. And we'll also work through community partners. Now, here I have this Cheer, you know, Impact, CASA. I know they're all here in Tacoma Park. We've, the good news is Adventist Healthcare already has close partnerships with all of these folks. We fund some of their programming through our community partnership fund, so it'll be very easy for us to work with them to, again, spread the word through their networks as well. And we will, we can create advertising that's targeted, again, to the cultural, ethnic communities within Tacoma Park. A flyer doesn't do a whole lot of good if you can't read it. So we can actually, absolutely develop that as well. So just, just wrapping up, just kind of reiterate, reiterate, Adventist Healthcare does remain committed to Tacoma Park. I know that it was rough when the hospital left. I, I, I hear you. But we have continued to provide, but we've been providing services here since nineteen oh seven, and we've continued to provide services here. Throughout COVID, we were providing services here. I don't know if any of you got your vaccines at the, at the clinic up there on the campus, but that was a busy, busy clinic. In fact, for a while, we were outpacing the state clinics. Took them a little while to figure out things. And, you know, we hosted various community organizations, again, for over a year throughout the crisis to help support their food distribution efforts, rent-free, just in vacant space on the, on the, on the property. And, and we remain committing to, committed to providing services, hopefully, you know, in the, the ones that are outlined in the proposal. So with that, I think I've, I've talked enough. As I mentioned, some of my other colleagues are on the line virtually, and we're happy and available to answer questions.
Thank you. I think I'll first turn to my colleagues who are part of this working group, see if they want to add anything. Councilmember Kovar, Dibala, and Deputy City Manager were part of these conversations. So I see, Councilmember Kovar, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Nicholas, for making the presentation. I think the proposal has ended up in a, a good spot and a productive one, and I'd like to see it go forward. As I understand it, the upcoming step would be for the organization to apply formally to the state, and we would have an opportunity to express our support for that if we choose to. I think it would make sense for us to do that. But I do want to just give a little background. Yeah, I was asked to be part of this small group, and I was a little skeptical at first because I thought it was important that the urgent care facility be maintained, since that was one of the conditions at the time of the departure of the hospital. But looking at all the data and getting an opportunity to talk, not only to Andrew, but his colleagues, and, and getting the chance to tour the existing primary care facility that was mentioned in Silver Spring, and the potential future location at the adjacent medical building to the old hospital site, I, I began to feel more supportive. And I do think that with the addition of the important commitment to the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, I think that's a big addition, and it meshes well with the plans that the city has been talking about with regard to funding mental health crisis response teams through ARPA. It was recom, versions of that were recommended by the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force. I know, as we mentioned, the, the county is working on that as well. And so I think all that sort of comes together in a way that's, is positive for us. So I think if we were, as a council, going to support this, I think there's some areas that we probably want to see some clarification on, and I'll just mention them briefly, and then let others talk. We talked about the hours, and, and I think Andrew mentioned that as things went forward, if there was an ability to go beyond those hours, depending on the level of response and interest and the number of patients and so on, we, we could have hours beyond just the eight to five, and that's something that I think would make sense and would want that, that type of commitment to be there. And I think the marketing, the proposal has significantly improved, not that it was bad beforehand, but, but I think more in the way of marketing plans that are focused on the community as we all see it, I think we're added, and, you know, that might need some additional massaging, but I think it's moving in the right direction. And then for me, the third thing is, the data showed that most of the cases are, that have been going to the urgent care facility aren't the true emergencies that you described of the open wounds and the fractures and so on. A small number are, and I think it's important just for us to make sure that when someone does potentially show up at the, at the new primary care facility, assuming it goes forward, or a person who has a challenge of that type, a healthcare challenge of that type, just ensuring that we really can get them to the place that they need. So with those kinds of caveats just being made, maybe a little bit more clear in it, I, I would, I'm generally supportive of moving forward with this and having the city endorse it. So I'll stop there.
Great. Councilman Dibala?
Yeah, I think it's more important to hear from people who haven't read this five times, but I just want to say thank you for, all of you on the phone as well, for participating in, in doing a proposal this way and listening to our concerns, particularly about the kinds of people who live here and the kinds of people who don't have services now. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Council.
Great. I want to see if the Deputy City Manager has anything to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, the proposal has come a long way, and I just wanted to thank you, Andrew, and Dr. Leslie, and everyone for working with us. And, you know, behavioral health is really important for the city, primary care is as well, but the addition of the space for the Crisis Response Center is, could really be a game changer here. We've been talking with the county for a while now. You know, our, in our city facilities, space is really at a premium, so for you all to offer us a space is, is going to be really important, and I look forward to working with you all on, on that in the coming months.
Likewise, absolutely.
Great, and I'll just add before we turn over to our colleagues, you know, this, this, we started meeting, I think, in January, end of January, and we met through January, February, and most of March on Fridays, did a couple of field trips. And I will say that, you know, the Adventist Healthcare, on each call, we have two folks here, but there, I think we were like five of us, five from you all and, and the four from our team, and we really dug into things. I think as, I hope my colleagues see from the presentation tonight and the proposal that you sent back, we asked a lot of questions, got more data that was crunched, and really appreciate the, the back and forth and the answering of our questions. I think all of us learned a great deal, and it was really helpful and to do that. So I just want to say thank you for the time that went into this, and I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Kovar, who said, you know, moving forward, I'm going to recommend to my colleagues that we, we, you know, we'll see what you put in for the Maryland Healthcare Commission as your formal request, but I think this proposal has come a long way, and I, and I hope we can move forward with it. With that, I'll turn over to Councilmember Smith, and then Councilwoman Sears.
Thank you for the presentation. I've been on the council since Joyce Newmeyer was the president of Washington Adventist Hospital. So I've seen a lot of iterations with plans, proposals, a lot of things that you guys have come to that podium and told previous councils. So I understand you guys don't want to be in the business of urgent care, want to see and do something else. I think the behavioral health proposal is a winner. I wish you would decouple that from the preventive care proposal. I don't understand why you guys would want to be in that business here. I mean, they're already doctors in that facility, so wouldn't you be competing with them? What is it that makes you guys different for us to believe you will provide this service for next five, ten, fifteen years?
Sure, great question, Councilman. And I certainly appreciate, you know, the, the history and everything that, you know, has gone on between the city and Adventist Healthcare. But what makes it different, I think we, is what I mentioned early on. We see a, a high demand for this level of care and a, a lack of providers, particularly in the southern portion of the city. So I think we can come in and meet that need. We're also an established, you know, brand, so to speak, in, in the region, so people are familiar with us, which will help support our, our efforts as we promote the city, or promote the, the, the center. So I, we are very confident that we can come in and, and establish a, a, a thriving practice in, in that facility.
So at that building, the condo building, did you guys buy those suites or you leasing them?
We own those.
You own those suites, okay. And how many are there?
We own three, maybe four.
And you guys have done performance, so you know how this project is going to do financially. Can you share any information offline on how the financial well-being or, you know, because I, you know, right now, I'll be honest, the behavioral health, I could support. The preventive care, I'm hesitant, right? Because I supported urgent care, and I thought it wasn't going to last very long, right? Because when it was proposed to us, talked about how there are other urgent care facilities in Maryland that are not very profitable, but you guys were going to do it anyway because you wanted to move to White Oak, right?
Right.
So if we're going to go down this road, and I'm going to support this and tell my residents, last time I checked, the hospital's still on Ward Five, that you guys are going to do this thing, and then five, seven years down the road, it's like, hey, we got to pull up stakes because we can't make money. And that's what you guys need to do, you got to make money. Not going to make money, somebody has to subsidize your effort, right? And I don't think the state is giving you guys any money to do this preventive care thing, right?
Right.
So I would like to see if you can share those financials, that this is going to be something that's going to be part of the community, and residents are not going to say to me, why did you say, okay, why did you say yes to this? And they're gone. Another question regarding urgent care, do you guys have the data that shows the number of people that, that receive the Affordable Care Act insurance?
Do you have, in, in Tacoma?
The people that were clients, customers, whatever you want to call them, that received care at the urgent care center, do you know how many of those people?
I, I don't know if we'd know that, but I can see, because Affordable Care Act would have enabled most people to purchase commercial insurance. So I don't know if we'd be able to parse out who purchased it via the, I'm pretty sure we couldn't, via the Affordable Care Act through subsidies, and, and who didn't.
Okay, well-
Until we get to that Medicaid for all, then, you know.
Well, someone from your, the hospital at one time could tell me, you know.
I would certainly ask, absolutely.
And so, because I'm just curious, because I've heard, you know, some horror stories about people that receive Affordable Care Insurance, and the premiums, premiums are so high that they can't get the level of care that they need. Last question regarding, have you guys done any surveys, the people that actually use the urgent care? Because I've tracked some comments of residents on the listservs, and I want to see what you guys have to say.
Sure, I, I don't know, but I can look into and, and, and get you that information.
Okay.
All three pieces.
All right, thank you.
And I, sorry, Andrew, I don't know if you want to have Dr. Leslie speak to the, the connection between primary care and behavioral health that we talked about sometimes in our, in our small groups. I, I don't know if that would help Councilmember Smith.
Sure, absolutely. Either Dr. Leslie or, or Kim, whose name is Mary Ward on the screen, but-
I know, I knew her name was wrong, that's why I didn't say it. Sorry.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
Sure, I can start. Thank you for having us, and thank you for allowing us to join virtually while we're at our board retreat. The connection between primary care and behavioral health is, is that many behavioral health patients with depression, with anxiety, are actually served in primary care first. Unfortunately, there is still this stigma associated with seeking out behavioral health care. So primary care physicians, nurse practitioners, PAs actually serve as ambassadors, so to speak, for patients to get behavioral health. They vouch for us as psychiatrists and as therapists, serve as brokers in a way, and given the demographics of Tacoma Park, I think it's, it's actually a wonderful idea to embed behavioral health in primary care, and it's what many forward-thinking clinics are doing to help increase the utilization of behavioral health services of their population. And when I reference your demographics, people who are, who have immigrated to the U.S. are less likely to seek behavioral health services, but if they have a good relationship with their primary care provider, and it's a warm handoff, so to speak, the, the likelihood of them continuing behavioral health services is hopefully higher. So that's the thinking of the connection, and I'd be happy to allow Kim to elaborate.
Thanks, Marissa. I, I second everything she said. The only other comments I would add is, primary care providers are actually very involved in, if you will, the prescribing of psychotropic medications to people with, with mental illness. And we're seeing that a lot. Some of that is, is due to shortage of psychiatry, and we want to encourage it. And we do a lot of work to, to educate our primary care providers so that they're more comfortable working with the behavioral health population. So the partnership is really a solid one, and it, you know, we really do want to encourage patients to pursue care in their primary care settings. As, as Marissa mentioned, there's maybe less stigma, there's more comfort there. So I think it is a nicely aligned pairing.
So do we have any data that shows what's the percentage of people that go to a primary care office that are then transitioned into behavioral health? Do we know that one percent, five percent, twenty percent?
I can share that. I actually do have information that would reflect, there's a lot of evidence that shows the number of patients who are- There's a lot of evidence that shows the number of patients who are in a primary care setting, who are receiving behavioral health services, you know, whether they're being prescribed or, or linked to behavioral health services. There, there's a huge, the whole concept, actually, of what they call behavioral health integration is just that. It's the integration of behavioral health and primary care specifically.
Thank, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Circe.
Great. Thank you all so much for continuing to work with the city to address not only the needs of advances healthcare, but also the needs of the city. I think that, you know, care coordination is critical in ensuring that we're thinking about the whole person and every touch point that they may have along the care continuum, I think is, is critical. And I do know that there is a movement towards that integration of care within various health systems, you know, to really try to keep people and coordinate care within, within the network. So one question I have about the primary care providers that you all are proposing, it looked like about 17% of their urgent care cases were children, which is typically baby has a fever really late at night, folks don't want to go to the, to the E.D. Has there been thought around pediatricians? And whether or not there was this balance of primary care more generalist, primary care providers versus making sure that there's a pediatrician on site? Given that it looks like about 20% of our population is under the age of 16, it seems like most of the urgent care folks were, you know, pediatric. So has there been thought about that?
Sure. So I, well, I think, well, over 80% of the folks, I think we're actually over, we're over 18. But certainly for that point, I think right now, we do not have any pediatricians with, within our network. So right now, the plan is, is partnership with, with, you know, local established practices to, to create that connection and refer anybody who doesn't have that service, you know, to, to somebody nearby, including the one that's on the floor, you know, where we propose, you know, we're on the fourth floor, elevator opens, you're looking at the pediatrician's office, turn left and we're just down the hall. So that's where we're starting now. But I, you know, I can certainly take it back and, and something we can think about, I think particularly as we assess demand and get a little experience. And it's something that we could definitely look at. But I do know upfront, I don't think we have pediatricians right now within our network.
And then, you know, one other point around behavioral health. So it seems as there's more focus on mental health and not necessarily substance misuse. In, in many cases, individuals who suffer from mental health needs also, in, in some cases have co-occurring substance use disorder needs as well. And when we're talking about crisis management, in many cases, those things go hand in hand. So for the behavioral health counseling services, has there been talk about not only the mental health, depression, anxiety, but also substance use treatment?
Sure.
Peer support counseling, things like that?
Sure. So I know right now at all our offices, we do, do the expert screening for folks who come in. But then do, I don't know, Kim or Dr. Leslie, I could speak through it a little bit, but I don't know if you want to talk to the linkages there between, you know, some of the counseling, the cohort, yeah?
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to. So as, as Andrew mentioned, all of our patients are screened for substance use disorders. And in some cases, we still will work with patients who have substance use disorders. As you mentioned, they, they often go hand in hand. It's not uncommon for there to be a co-occurring issue. That said, in, in our outpatient, in, in our, the behavioral health counseling arena, if someone's primary issue is substance use disorder, then we would want to link them with specialists. And actually Adventist Healthcare does have a chemical dependency program. It is located in Rockville, but what, but their, their intensive outpatient program is actually virtual at this time. What we would be doing is if, if a patient came in that, you know, screened and was positive for substance use disorder, what we would do is we would get them connected with our program. And if ours is not convenient to them, or if they need something else, we would get connected them, get connected to other services in the community.
Great. Thank you. And last question. So, you know, with the provider shortage that's going on, in many cases, the, the, the challenge is getting an appointment, right? So, and with the integrated care, one of the things that I'm a little skeptical about is whether or not this is more for providing more opportunities for primary care visits for folks that are already within the advances healthcare network to kind of expand that capacity versus necessarily bringing in new patients within the city of Tacoma Park. So, you know, I appreciate all of the, the outreach and things that are, that are transpiring. But, you know, how realistically, given, given we're talking about a very small number of primary care providers, what would be the real capacity increase for like new patient intake? Knowing that we're already dealing with a shortage and most folks are having to wait for, wait for not, you know, primary care appointments?
Sure. Well, I, I can speak to as much as possible. We are genuinely looking for new patients and that I think will be, you know, people may be familiar with Adventist because we've, we've been here and been around. But we want them to now get to know us, you know, as, as their primary care physicians. So first, the first step is to try to get to that, you know, 15 patients a day level of, of, of volume. Until we get there, there'll be, there will be appointments available. And then if, if we start to sustain that level, the, the great thing is, is as, as we get busier within that office, and that's when obviously the appointment availability, and we have the physicians to staff, by the way.
Okay.
We could be up and running to the level that I've described within a matter of weeks if this was approved. There's some regulations about winding down the urgent care that, you know, we have to make sure is all done, of course, properly. But we've got that staff ready to go. In fact, we'd pull some folks from the urgent care and they'd go right over. So we can staff at that level right away. And then we could, once we hit that, that 15 level, we've got the space. And with our network of physicians, confident we could expand the services available. But of course, then recruiting that additional physician, if we're still in the workforce crisis and we're, we're able to reach that point, it, it, it could be a challenge. But at this point, that'd be a good problem to have, really, if we were that successful, that we were looking to expand and bring in another, another physician.
Yeah. It would be helpful and I apologize if, if it's already there. But, you know, what the new patient capacity could be with the, with the new primary care docs. And lastly, I want to thank you all so much for your willingness to provide space for the, for the crisis, the crisis area. I think as the deputy city manager mentioned, space is very limited for us, but more importantly, the right space, right? And so making sure that we have a, a facility that would enable us to provide people who are in, you know, crisis, mental, behavioral, substance use crisis, a place that is separate to some degree from the daily hustle of the city functions, but also where they can be seen by professionals, I think is, is just so critical. So I, I do want to thank you all for really working with the subgroup and the city staff on really helping us to, to come up with some possible solutions and approaches that we could take towards addressing the behavioral health needs of the city. So thank you.
Our pleasure.
Councilwoman Kostic. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A lot of my questions have been answered since I'm going a little late in the queue here. But I did just want to kind of share a couple of thoughts and a couple of ideas. So first of all, I, I really am excited, as Councilmember Circe just said, about the Behavioral Crisis Center. That's, I think, would be a huge asset to our community. And I see a lot of value in the preventative care model and the combining that with the, the mental health resources, I think is a huge benefit. You know, in terms of the loss of the urgent care, I do think that's going to be a loss for the community. It is a place that people can go 24/7, which this would not be. And I, I do think it is important to recognize that it is, that is a loss for the community. It's also a loss for people who need to take their kids somewhere for the, the sore throat. And that always happens for whatever reason, not between nine and five on Monday through Friday. And so I would love to see, you know, if there are ways to, to help build up some support for that, particularly for the younger folks and, and to help direct people into those urgent care facilities that do exist. I, I understand it sounds like that model is maybe not super profitable. And I can understand why it isn't getting as much priority, but I do think it is a real need in the community. And I, I will say, just from my experiences in the urgent care facility that you have here now, I don't really feel like you've spent a lot of investment in that, that location. And I, I think that's part of the reason why it hasn't really gotten, you know, kind of taken off with, with people being there and, and the, the people coming in to, to get those services. But I'm excited about the fact that you're excited about this because I think that shows, you know, you're working with the city, which I think is a really, really positive thing. And you are, it sounds like you are committed to this, which I think is, is very positive and would lead to, to great services for the community. So I guess one of the things I'd like to see is just that longevity and the commitment to, to being there for a long period of time. The hours also, I think even if this is not an urgent care, if, if people are able to access appointments on Saturdays and/or Sundays in the future, that would be of value. I think it was useful to see your charts about the services that people could access in the primary care as well as the urgent care. But I think it's really more about the timing and when it happens. So those hours would be helpful. And then in terms of the counseling services, I, it's interesting for me to see the statistics you showed there with people preferring the telehealth option for counseling. Because then sort of anecdotally, what I've heard from people is an interest actually in, in having more in-person and, and difficulty finding the in-person, particularly, I think, for younger, so for teenagers and, and children. So I, I'd love to see that be something that isn't just once a week as you kind of grow, to make that something that's more, more frequent in-person as well.
That's absolutely on the table. We evaluate our volumes weekly. And so assess to kind of sort of assess the demand for services. So, and that's certainly, if, if the demand is there, it's something we can absolutely do.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Andrew, for the presentation. Not just the presentation, but the vast amount of work that you've put into this. And, and I have no concerns about the presentation as you, or the plan as you presented it tonight. I do want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Circe, for bringing up the question of the substance use disorders. And I would just like to see an explicit description in your plan that makes a commitment to those things that you talked about and answer your question.
Absolutely, absolutely. There, there's a piece of it in there, but I'll, I'll say, I'll highlight that for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Smith.
Just thought another question while my colleagues were taking their round. Do you guys have the data that shows the percentage of people that the foundation has to pay their, their bills that were used in the urgent care? Or did you guys pay anyone's bills that, that received care at the urgent care center?
You mean like, so percentage of like charity care?
Exactly.
At the urgent care? Let, let me find out.
Okay. Because it is historically, we've been told that your customer here is lower income and that has been a problem.
Sure.
And your foundation, charity, has had to step up to cover a lot of those bills. So if you guys are going in this new direction, I just want to make sure that we all understand that this might be a possibility. And you continue with this proposal.
Absolutely. And actually, I'm, I'll be curious to what the result is because the primary care will have a more robust actually response in this way. There is a charity care policy that, that, you know, covers our, allows for reduced rates and, and things of that nature. But in addition to that, a service that's here that is not at the urgent care, we will help folks if they come in and do not have insurance, we will help them get enrolled in Medicaid. We've, we've got that already embedded in our, in our services. So that's something we'll, we'll walk through. That can sometimes be a little cumbersome or clunky. And sometimes it's a technology barrier. So we'll be able to do that as well on-site.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're undocumented, you can't enroll in Medicaid?
Emergency Medicaid only, I believe, is the, what's available for undocumented residents.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. I'm not seeing any other, Councilmember Simmons, is that an old light?
It's an old light.
I'm not seeing any other lights on. I think our, we have a couple of follow-ups, but I think the next step is that you all are going to prepare a formal, was it called? Ask for the Maryland Healthcare Commission, share that with us. And then we will prepare a letter to move forward. And I think you're trying to get in front of them in May, correct?
Yes. The meeting's May 21 and we did, I did reach out. I've copied the W City Manager on that email. So they actually, the Healthcare Commission surprisedly put the ball in our court to, to draft it. So I'll, I'll work with Jessica on, on doing that and.
And get back to, I think, Councilmember Smith's questions and just a couple of other.
It goes without saying.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you all again for the partnership and for joining us this evening. And we look forward to next steps on this.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right. Our next work session this evening is our FY 2022 Budget Amendment Number Four. And I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, we have the Fourth Budget Amendment. Our First Budget Amendment was adopted on July 28th. Second Budget Amendment was in October 6th. Third Budget Amendment was February 9th. And this evening, we have a budget amendment with items. And, and this last budget amendment, the reductions, the reductions in this Fourth Budget Amendment are freezes in positions until July 1st, delayed expenditures or initiatives that we had due to availability of using ARPA for a number of the projects were removed from the general fund to the consolidated in the ARPA funds. There's some increases in position of relocation into the city manager's office for additional services for the audit services, street light, some temporary assistance and sanitation, additional cost for the police vehicle outfit. So that's most of what's in here outside of, if, if you take majority of the 5.1 reductions that we have presented before you, majority of that 4.2 million is the library due to delay in that project. We, we didn't, we anticipated doing the project this year. That has now moved to next year as most of these other projects. And a lot of this work, I have to commend. My senior leadership team is, is the work that we went through, cost management activity over the last couple of months to be able to reduce the general fund impact in fiscal year '22. With that, we'll take any questions if, if council has any.
Great. Thank you. Who wants to kick us off on the budget amendment? Councilmember Kovar? Okay.
I'll kick. Thank you for the presentation and the explanation. What, I wasn't 100% clear on it. Maybe you can, in, in a few of the amounts that are a little bit larger, just, just clarify that. So in some cases, if I understood correctly, certain funds that were scheduled to be spent in this fiscal year aren't going to be spent. And they're not going to be spent next year either. They're just savings. And is that?
So, 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 so a lot, a lot of the, a lot of the projects, we, we froze that we would not spend this year. They are in fiscal year '23 budget. So they're just delayed or, or a hold for the two months because we wouldn't be able to do the projects.
So, so in some cases, that's happening. Are there others where it's just they're not being spent? And, you know, they're being moved into ARPA, so they will be spent, but they won't come out of the general fund anymore. They will come out of ARPA, right? So they're in the budget, but they're sort of separate from the part of the budget that's funded through our property.
For, for '22, yes.
And so one of the ones I noticed where the numbers were a little bit bigger, because some are quite small, but there was, I believe it was 250,000 in street improvement, pavement and so on, and 200,000. and 200,000 in sidewalks. So that's $450,000. So that's removed from the FY 22 budget. And is it added to whatever would be uh, in FY 23 for those two purposes? Or is it just, there's money in next year's budget for those purposes? Or, or is that even a meaningful question? That's what I'm trying to understand. Uh, the money is being, is it being cut or is it being shifted? And if it's being shifted, is next year's amount reduced correspondingly? I guess that's what I'm hoping to understand.
So for most, most of the, uh, CIP is, uh, is, is reduced, meaning we will not spend it this year at 22 and we pushed it to out year. So we pushed it to 23, uh, or 24.
But so, and maybe we don't have to answer this right this evening, but of those two that I mentioned, 250,000 and 200,000, do we, or can we get subsequently the answer to which fiscal year those funds will end up being, are, are, are proposed to be spent in as a result of this amendment? Let's put it that way. And I'm fine getting the answer later if it's not immediately findable, which is, uh, which would be understandable.
I, I want to say for that amount, I believe we moved that to 23, uh, for the two, for the sidewalk pieces. But we can, we can, unless, Deputy City Manager?
So, I mean, I think if Director Braithwaite would have preferred to, to keep the amount in fiscal year 2022 and actually have a higher amount in 23. Um, but I believe for that particular item, we're just reducing in 22. And then we do have funding for that purpose in 23, but it's not as high as Director Braithwaite would like it to be. And again, this is part of our, our trying to control costs.
Okay, but, but then, um, setting aside the library, the total net impact of this amendment for this fiscal year is to reduce spending by something like 935,000, 936,000. So again, maybe in the way you just answered that later, because there's a lot. I don't want you to have to go through them all now. But could we get an explanation for how much of the 935 is like what you just described then? It's really not being moved to next year because we're just not going to do it versus the ones that's just being pushed ahead three months and spent then. Can, can we get, is it possible to break it down like that?
Sure, we, I think we could do that. I think in the description, in a lot of places we say delay. So if it says delay in the description on the Budget Amendment, that means that, you know, it's, it's a contained project. For, I'm trying to think of an example. Um, like there's a planning project, for example, that we wanted to do this year that's just been bumped out. So the description says delayed. Um, other descriptions say reduction, which, which means we're, we're doing less of whatever that thing is. Um, I think the vacancy savings are another example. All of the lapsed salaries, our department heads would prefer to fill those now. In fact, they were planning on filling them now. Um, but we told them to hold off to, to generate the savings. And then those positions aren't going away in 23. They're, they're budgeted for the full fiscal year. But, but we wanted to have a few months of savings and that carries over. So when originally we were, when our requests from departments came in for the fiscal year 2023 baseline budget, we were about 3 million higher than where we wanted to be. And so we told departments to, to, we need to reduce 3 million somewhere. You can either do it in the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2022 or you can do it out of your 23 requests. So this Fourth Budget Amendment is, is part of our effort to find that 3 million. Um, and so some of it is temporary savings, some of it is us doing less of things. And some of it is us saying, we're not going to do it this year, but we will do it in 23.
But even in that case, if there's a, a position to be filled and we just learned of some new ones tonight, um, it's unlikely that some of those positions will be filled on July 2nd, right? I mean, it might take several additional months, which would potentially mean further savings as well, which can't exactly be predicted right now, I guess.
Correct, yeah. And there are, there are a couple of items where departments had said, you know, we're not going to get to that in the fourth quarter anyway. So I think normally we might leave that as is and see if they spend it and do a bunch of carryovers, right? In the July Budget Amendment. But this year we said, no, we need to know now what your savings are going to be so that we can plan more accurately. So we actually expect to have fewer carryovers.
But of the 935 and 936, you know, some of that is just being pushed into the next year. Uh, some of it is not being spent and won't be spent. Is that?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
You, um, Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I think I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around some of the things that Councilmember Culver was just asking about as well. Um, I do think it would be helpful to get some of those, um, to, and, and I apologize, maybe it's in there. It sounds like it is in there, but it, it didn't, for whatever reason, register with me. Um, what was a delay versus what was a cut? So I think, um, that would be helpful just to get a summary of. Um, and I also think it would be useful to see how that changes what the, um, particularly for the CIP, what the, um, predicted, I forget what it's called. It's getting late. Um, the predicted, uh, expenditures for FY 22 are in that chart. Because I know for myself, I frequently look in the proposed budget to see sort of how much did we spend last year? And so if we spent $500,000 on street repaving, maybe we could spend a little bit less this year. But if we, it looks like we're looking at cutting the majority of it in this Budget Amendment, then I don't think we want to cut any necessarily for this coming year. So I think that's just relevant to look at as we, we consider the upcoming budget.
Sure. So, and also though, I think this Fourth Budget Amendment is to make what is in our financial system reflect what is currently in the budget book in the fiscal year 2022 projected column. So these changes are reflected in that column. So if you wanted to compare across fiscal years, just go right, go right back to the budget book, um, because that, that is reflected. The, these changes are already incorporated into the budget book projected column for fiscal year 2022.
So I was just looking at, no, it's, I've moved it, so I'm not going to be able to find it again. But I was just looking at the CIP and it had listed sidewalks, um, see if I can pull it up again. It had listed sidewalks expenditures were something like 200,000 projected for FY 22 and 250, I think for, 200 for city, 250 for, um, SHA. But I'm guessing that's probably not what it would be if we're reducing by this 200 that's listed in the, the Budget Amendment? Or does that include the new sidewalks as well, perhaps?
Do you have a page number?
Yeah, it is, um, 226.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I would need to see what, um, the original adopted amount was. But my suspicion is that the fiscal year 2022 projected column is lower than what was adopted.
Okay, it, it would be helpful to get that because I actually don't think we adopted anything higher than 250 in each of those categories for sidewalks, just because I know we're, we're frequently, um, nudging that, those numbers down in those discussions.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, if we could just get a, a look at that, um, that would be helpful. Um, and, and I guess I'm also wondering on the street paving, it looks like we're cut, this Budget Amendment proposes cutting that by 200,000. Um, which if I'm reading this correctly, would mean we've only, we'd only spend about 50,000 on street paving this year? Is that, am I reading that correctly? On street, street repaving? I guess I'm just curious what the, what the impact of that is on the conditions on the streets and, and kind of the long-term impact there.
If I can just add to that question too, I actually had that flag too, because I know the struggle we sometimes run into with street repairing is that we can't do it unless the temperature is consistently above 50 degrees. So cutting it now, saying you can't do it now as of April or May of this year, and then you have to wait till fiscal year 2023 and then think of contracting. I just, thinking about the impact of that on potential street repaving. Um, that was actually, yeah, the question I had on cutting that. Um, what, what would that mean? And do we then get in this weird cycle of not being able to do it then next fiscal year? So.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the reductions are not ideal, that, that's for sure. Um, but, you know, whatever is in the projected fiscal year 2022 column in the budget book is what Director Braithwaite expects to spend in this fiscal year. So she expects to spend 250,000 on the sidewalks, um, as well as 250,000 on the street rehabilitation. That's her projected total amount that she's spending. And that, that include, that should include any reduction she's made here.
Yeah, could you just double check on that? Because I, I'm not sure we dedicated more, that much towards those things. Um, so let's, let's just make sure we, we find out the, the implications there. And I think also for the street repaving, if there is only 50,000 left, I wonder if it makes sense to just move. I mean, I'll defer to Director Braithwaite and her expertise, but I wonder if it makes sense then for economy of scale to just do it all, move that 50,000 also to, to FY 23 and do it all at the same time? Because it seems like we typically schedule it for the same time. Um, my other questions were, there's also a line here. And if, if you don't have an answer right now, I'd be happy to get a follow-up later. But there's a line on transit pedestrian, a reduction due to decrease in funding of 14,000? I was just curious what that was in, in housing and community development?
Yeah, we, we can follow up on that.
Um, and then on the police vehicle extra cost. I recall us adopting something related to an extra police vehicle already. Am I, is this an addition to what we've already done? I, I guess I'm trying to remember how exactly that added up. And if not, I can, if, it's kind of a vague question, so I'm happy to look, look back. I, I think we had a, a vehicle that we thought we, maybe that was an authorization that we thought we purchased and then, um,
And then we bumped it up, yeah.
We had to do it again. I just was curious if this was the same thing or, or something else. Um, and I'll, I'll email any other more specific questions. I guess the other thing I just wanted to follow up on was the library and the delay in moving forward on that project that's mentioned here. Um, does that mean we don't anticipate getting out an RFP this fiscal year? Or does that mean it's just, there's been some savings because it's been a little later this fiscal year than anticipated?
No, we, 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 we plan on getting the RFP out and, and bring something to council, uh, in the next few months.
Great. Thanks.
Uh, Councilwoman DiBala?
Thank you. I, I, I had similar questions. So on the reductions, it sounds like there's three categories. One is personnel. And so if there's not a body in the position, there's no charge. And, and that's just a savings. And if there's a, the word reduction, then that's a literally that. And if there's the word delay, if I heard you correctly, that's something that's still intended to be done. For example, reduction due to delay in public space management projects. So does that mean that the 65,000 is effectively rolled, it's not rolled over. It's reduced this year, but then it's added in next year? So if I went to the budget book, I would see that $65,000 somewhere in HCD? Cause we're still planning to do that project.
Yep, that is budgeted in 23.
Right, so, so for, I agree. It would be helpful to have those three categories spelled out. That would really, really help me. Um, so for example, reduction due to the delay of website redesign for the new AV. Setting aside that I'm not sure I knew we were doing that. Um, again, if that's a delay, does that mean that I would see that again, uh, see that show up somewhere in fiscal 23?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, so then I had a couple of other questions. On the first page, the fourth item, general fund, labor, employment, legal services. That's all legal services, the increased spending expected for the fourth quarter. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, and then, uh, there was a another category of reductions or delays that we all talked about. And there was a list of, of, not with this, but with the budget book, there was a list of reconciliation items from fiscal 22 and which ones were going to get moved to ARPA and which ones were going to get done. And there were a couple that we didn't talk about. And one of them, so if I don't see it on this list, the plan is still to do it in fiscal 22. For example, the tree pilot program. So that list had the stormwater management money. It had the community navigators, oh, the list of reconciliation items from this fiscal 22.
Right.
And, and most of those are either in here because they're being moved to, to ARPA or they're in here because they're not getting done. But there were a couple that didn't ever get explained and that, um, looking to see.
So, yeah, if they're not in this Fourth Amendment, we are still doing them in this fiscal year. The, the tree pilot is one example that we are moving forward with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, is that it? That might be it. And I know this must've been very painful for everybody, but I do appreciate doing this now instead of in July or, or at least a little closer to the end of the year rather than wait till the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Cersei?
Great. I think, um, a lot of the questions, um, that I have are, are pretty similar to that of others. Um, so, so did we in essence, um, implement a hiring freeze? Right? Cause that's kind of what it looks like.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so it, it, it would be helpful. Um, as my colleagues have said, if we could kind of, you know, to some degree bucket or at least flag, um, in a more, um, uh, easier way, kind of the why, right? So it seems like you had a hiring freeze. Um, so those salary savings associated with that hiring freeze, for me, I'm looking for carryover, right? What is likely to be carried over that we can then kind of think through mathematically on the new budget, right? So I know a hiring freeze is going to be a carryover. Um, there's a lot here around, um, projects that are delayed. Um, and it doesn't really seem like there's a lot of cutting. It seems more like they're delays. So basically it sounds like things that had not started at this point in time, you all said, look, we're not going to be able to do it. So stop it. Let's not do that work. And so then that means that that would likely be some form of the savings associated with those projects that were kind of stops could in essence be carryover, right? Because even if it is in the next budget, right? It's, for me, I'm not comparing it to the next budget. I just want to know how much of the FY 22 budget are we not going to do for one reason or another? That we can then say these are funds from FY 22 that would be, I guess, free for the taking, right? And then the council would need to decide on how we want to take it. Apply it to the next, um, fiscal year, you know, the general funds and all the different funds account. And it basically would apply to the next fiscal year. Or if there are some things that are in this cut list that we think are really, really important to go ahead and get started, Allah, you know, the sidewalk work, for example, that if we delay it, that means there's this endless cycle, which I learned during the, during the 2020 budget, that you can never catch up, right? So, um, because of how the contracting cycle works. So, um, I think that for me would, would be helpful just so that I, I know that I'm thinking about these things properly. Because there are some things that were, um, in essence, um, overages that we anticipate, which makes sense. There are some things that are stops. Um, and we could consider those to be carryovers. There's a hiring freeze, which we would consider to be carryover. And then it looks like there's, um, a lot of, um, I, I want to say maybe grant matches? Maybe? Um, in the HCD where there's a lot of increases, then takes away, takeaways and then increases and then takeaways. Um, so.
The grants are in the special revenue fund section at the very end, yeah. But there are, I think like the sixty-five thousand under planning is a, is a match that's moving, because we're doing it in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so that's helpful, because then those are just, you know, we have to carry the necessary match in order to balance everything. Yeah, so it, it, you know, without being repetitive, it, it does, it would be helpful for us to kind of have a better idea of kind of what buckets some of these things fall into, so that we can then have a better idea of what we're actually anticipating the carryover to be. One other thing, the, the items that are being moved because of ARPA, right? So there are some items that we're saying, we're taking them off the list, so to speak, because we can fund them using ARPA. And I'm not, so technically, in FY twenty-two, that's a carryover. Those are funds that are freed up, that we can then carry over into the next fiscal year.
So, I mean, I think originally, we had all hoped for a lot of these, particularly the community grant programs, that we would keep the general fund funding at its normal level, and then also do additional grants on top of that using ARPA funds. What we're saying, though, is that for right now, we're reducing the general fund allocation, so there are no general fund allocations, and we are funding that with, with the ARPA projects.
With the ARPA projects, right.
Yeah, so, so, yeah. So instead of expanding service, we're keeping the current level of service using ARPA.
Yep, okay. But for, for this particular amendment, right, what that means is, for the purpose of the budget, as we had, you know, organized it for, for twenty-two, we're saying we're not doing that work, right, on paper? Even though we're doing it with ARPA, and then, you know, we're saying we're not doing it. And so that should, in, in essence, free up general funds.
We've made the general fund reduction already.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're trying to not have, we're, we're trying to not have as many carryovers.
Okay.
We're reducing it now, so that we knew that we had more balance available to work with in twenty-three now, so that we're, we're more confident, yeah.
And we already accounted for that in the twenty-three budget.
The, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so that would, that would be helpful, because I'm, I'm trying to, my brain is trying to make these into carryover arguments, but it sounds like you all were already kind of anticipating some of this, and you tried to apply it to the budget, which kind of makes me think there's a free-for-all, like money grab, woo-hoo, five million bucks, and it's not, right? So, so if you all can make that a little clearer in terms of those buckets, that would be really helpful for me in kind of understanding how things are balancing.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, and again, I thank my colleague, Ms. Circe, for asking for more clarity. I have been admiring my colleagues that they understood this better than I do anyways. It seems that, you know, as I read down through this list, there are a lot of these items that, you know, one or two-word description of what it is isn't sufficient to say what's really being lost or postponed. And I think it would be helpful if those descriptions were a little more robust. But as I go down the list, I, I would just say that, and I hate to be a naysayer, but I, I have trouble supporting the reduction in street improvements. Again, you know, we've talked about in the past how that this is based on a formula that keeps our, our streets in good repair. And we schedule the, the repairs so that we don't fall behind and end up with, with poor roads in our communities. And history has shown that it's been easy for councils to take money from here when we're trying to improve our budget revenues or decrease our expenses. But it's foolhardy, because it just postpones the pain to later years. And then I would also, I'm also having trouble supporting the elimination of the plan for accreditation of our police department. I think that's an important step. And again, it's, it's hard to tell from the description. It just says accreditation and a reduction amount, but I'm guessing that's the total amount that was to be spent on that project this year. And then I'm, my question would be on the, and again, in the police department, it says a reduction in overtime, but yet that's something we can't always predict on how much overtime is going to be needed, especially when we're short on staffing. That, are we reducing overtime by an amount that is just a number out of the sky? Because there may be needs next month or, or tonight? We don't know what, what's going to happen. And that overtime budget is to provide a cushion, so that we do have the funds to, to do things. So some of the, some of the items may be, that one comes to mind to me, is something that is a judgment that could be made later in the, in the fiscal year than now. There are several things of, you can, because there, because the city manager is frozen hiring, we know that those positions aren't going to be filled, and we know how much money we can save by doing that. But overtime is, is an example of something that you can't predict. It's just, it's just a guess, and this is the wrong time to be guessing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I think the, the only other place that I had flagged, maybe to get additional information, is the, in the recreation department, what it means to freeze the youth success coordinator position and the team contractors, just again, thinking about summer and summer programming and other things, if that impacts that. So I just, because if we, if we say you can't hire then until starting July first, does that impact then what we're able to provide services in the rec department this spring and early summer?
It, it wouldn't have any impact, and, and the change for the youth success coordinator is the position that will be coming to the city manager's office with that vacancy.
Oh, okay.
And so the person that was in that role has been promoted to the team manager, who is also doing the team manager role and youth success coordinator. So it was a dual role that that person is in now. And we're taking that position and bringing it to the city manager's office to help the city manager's office out.
Got it, thank you, that's very helpful. Appreciate that explanation. All right, I don't see any other hands or anything. We'll get more information on this. I want to just let my colleagues know that as I went through the rolling agenda earlier, budget reconciliation is Monday, May second. In order to prepare for that, please start thinking about, are there items you want on the reconciliation list? Those can be sent to staff. They can also be talked about, starting to talk about that at our Monday night meeting that we have. So if you have things and you already know, don't hold back. Send them to the city manager and the deputy city manager, so they can start preparing the reconciliation list. And with that, we are adjourned.